Good morning. Happy New Year, everybody. It is 8:34, and I am going to officially call the 2022 organizational meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners to order. If I seem a little out of place to those who are usually in attendance here, it is because this is the first meeting of the year. Therefore, it's the organizational meeting, and by virtue of the office of Kent County Clerk, I will be chairing until a permanent chair is elected. My name is Lisa Posthumus Lyons, and I'm just very glad to be here. I want to welcome you to a new year and what I hope to be a great 2022. If I'm moving a little slowly or speaking a little slowly, please forgive me. I have to confess, I think I'm still in a little fog of holiday ham and Christmas candy, so hopefully I'm not the only one. At this time, I am going to call roll, and pursuant to the rules, the standing rules of this board, I will do so based on alphabetical order. Commissioners Antor.
Here.
Bolter.
Here.
Breevy.
Here.
Bulkowski.
President.
Burl.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Legrand. Commissioner Legrand. Commissioners McLeod.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Skaggs.
Here.
Sparks.
Here.
Teal. Commissioner Teal. Commissioners Womack.
Here.
Woodin. Commissioner Woodin.
Here.
Oh, I hear that. I'm going to circle back to give him time to get into his chair where he may vote. Commissioner Woodin.
Here.
Commissioner Steck.
Here.
My first test of the holiday days is passed, and I've successfully counted to 19. There are 17 commissioners present and two absent. We do have a quorum. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Mandy Bolter for the invocation. Please remain standing after for the pledge. Good morning, everyone. Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, today we recognize new beginnings. A new year, a fresh start. We collectively approach the new year with hope. We hope to serve our constituents to the best of our ability. We hope for clear minds, unselfish motives, servant hearts, for great ideas, willing collaborators, and positive, productive public policy. Guide us all to make these hopes reality in our time of service to our community and our time in service to you. In God's name, amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, our first item of business is to elect a chair of the Kent County Board of Commissioners. I will open the floor for nominations for chair. Commissioner Bolter.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would like today to nominate Stan Steck for Chair of the Board of Commissioners. I can't think of someone better suited for this role at this time. He was truly the ying to my yang as my vice chair, and I know Stan to be one of the most patient, smart, reliable, committed, and capable people I've ever worked with, and I'm very thankful for his talents. So I would like to nominate him.
Commissioner Bolter moves to nominate Commissioner Steck for chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Womack.
I have a point of order, please.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you. This may sound a little bit unusual, but seeing how we have a lot of people in here, and I realize we don't typically allow for public comment before. We do have a public comment after. I just feel like this is really a important piece, because this is going to be determining leadership over the next couple of years, and maybe the most important thing we do today. So I like a motion that we allow for public comment prior to these really important decisions. If you look at our agenda, we have, it's not just an organizational meeting, we do have other commission pieces on this. And every commission we've had, since I can remember, we've had two, you know, opportunities for the public to speak. Here we have one, and it's not till after the public.
Okay, thank you. We may be having some technical difficulties back there, but if you are speaking, please make sure to push your mic.
Usually I refuse to get too loud, but anyhow, just because it's such an important meeting, I think the most important piece is electing some officials and to not have public comment prior, it seems maybe not transparent to me. I'd like to make that a motion.
Support.
I'm sorry, I have to rule the motion out of order, and the reason is, I sympathize with the order of where public comment is. However, we don't, according to Rule 1.2, we do not have the ability to rearrange the agenda with a motion to change the agenda. It's only for an addition or a deletion, and so I just want to point that out. It may be something worthwhile of this commission to consider amending your standing rules, but at this time, according to Rule 1.2, I can only entertain a motion to add something to the agenda or to delete something from the agenda.
I suspected that was the case. I was asking for some consideration just because of the amount of people that show up typically, we don't have hardly anybody at these meetings.
Right.
So we would have to amend that at the next standing rules committee meeting?
I believe you do the, I think that will be March, is that right?
Of this year.
Of this year, right?
No.
Or is it?
Next year.
It takes three quarters of the vote.
You, to permanently change.
A permanent change takes three, two-thirds.
Two-thirds.
If it's a temporary change, it would just be a majority vote, but again, that would only be in order if it were to add something to the agenda for this meeting. To permanently place public comment at the beginning of the meeting, that would take a two-thirds majority to amend the standing rules.
Thank you for considering.
I really do appreciate it. Yes.
Just a point of clarification in my own mind, it's a simple majority when we're adopting the standing rules, though, and we do that every other year, correct?
Every other year, yes.
Yeah, just making sure I got that right.
Thank you for the motion, Commissioner Antor, though it had to be ruled out of order. We do have a motion on the table?
No, we have a nomination.
Or, I'm sorry, we have a motion and a second.
Well, just a clarification.
I'm sorry, please ask to be recognized. Commissioner Ponstein.
So, I mean, we had just said that if we had two-thirds of the vote on this thing, that we could amend the standing rules. So his motion isn't out of order, it's just that we need two-thirds to change where public comment has been and has always been.
Go ahead.
Actually, Commissioner, the motion was to amend the agenda. It was not a motion to amend the standing rules. So if someone wants to amend the standing rules, you need to amend 1.2, you need to amend 3.1, and 3.2. You need to amend all, you'd need to amend all three of those rules, because they're all three applicable to this situation.
Point of order, I'd like to, I might.
Call for recognition.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Antor.
I would like to attempt to amend the standing rules at this point.
Okay, one moment, please.
Can I ever take a motion? Do we have nominations open? I can do that, right?
It's a priority, yeah.
Yep. That is a motion that's in order. We have a motion on the table.
What is the motion?
We have a motion.
I'm going to go, Counselor, I don't have them written down. I'm relying on you to remind me of the order they need to go in, if that's okay. And I realize now, if only one, if none of them get through, or one of them gets dismissed, then we're done, right?
Well, and for my clarification, are you trying to change the rules for this meeting only or permanently?
Just for this meeting only.
Okay. That would be a motion under our current standing rule 3.8, which is a motion to suspend or alter the standing rules of the board only for this meeting in which the motion is made.
I'd like to make that.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
And if you could just clarify what you want to accomplish, what, so that it's in your language and not mine.
Okay.
Commissioner Antor, I'm gonna, the rules require motions such as this to be made in writing to the chair. I want to give you that opportunity. Once you get, I'd like to take a brief, two-minute recess, so you can put whatever it is in writing, so that we can comply with the rules, and then we'll call back to order and take up that motion.
You know, all we're trying to do is get public comment from people that showed up and woke up in the morning to come here, and I don't, it seems to be kind of complicated.
Yep.
We've seen a lot of crazier things happen in this chamber. We've had people come in here with blowhorns and signs, and we sat here and just pretended like it's okay. All I'm trying to do is get these folks a chance to talk.
Well, then, let's go at recess, get your motion in writing, so we can take it up and vote on the motion at hand, and if it passes, we'll do that.
Okay.
I just want to make sure we're operating under the rules that govern the procedures of the body. That's simply it. So I'm going to go at recess for, let's give you three minutes, and we'll call back to order once you have that in writing, okay?
Corporate counsel, assist me with this.
Brief recess.
Thank you.
Rule 1.
We, this Board of Commissioners will reconvene. We have a motion that Commissioner Antor made, and Commissioner Ponstein seconded. We gave them time to put the motion in writing per the standing rules. I'm going to ask Commissioner Antor, please use your outside voice, as I think the microphones may not be working well at these seats, to please read your motion prior to a vote.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just so I, Item 8, public comment, up to now, both reasons Commissioner Antor stated, and then additionally, is it, I think I heard it's 3.8, this would only require a majority?
Correct. It is a majority vote, because it's just for this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I had Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Clerk Lyons.
Okay. Any more discussion on the motion? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you.
Can you clarify, the agenda was not on the website, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Commissioner, Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to make sure we all are on the same page. Are we moving eight up, and therefore, Item 8 is going to become Item 4A? Or are we keeping Item 8, and this is an additional public comment?
It was my understanding that the agenda is being amended to move, or to suspend the rules 3.1, 3.2, and 1.2? Is that correct? To allow for public comment, to move eight to in-between agenda items four and five?
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page, and now I am.
And that's the intent of the motion, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So anyone who wants to speak for public comment will do it now, because eight potentially is going to move up, and that's just what I wanted to make sure everyone was on the same page about. Thank you.
Correct. There will also be an opportunity after appointments on the agenda for public comment related to general county matters as well. Okay? I had Commissioner Bulkowski.
Yeah, I just want to note that this agenda as printed is directly from our standing rules, so staff did not make a mistake. There was a mistake, it was made by us probably many years in a row, that this has been the agenda of the organizational meeting. So just to be clear, any kind of transparency that we may have an oversight of, that has at least been alleged by the mover and the seconder, it's our mistake, because we've let this go through year after year when the standing rules have come forward. So this agenda is, this agenda is what's directly out of the standing rules for the organizational meeting. So the motion is in order, but again, just to make sure us who's at fault, not staff.
Commissioner Green, and then Hennessy.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to kind of reiterate what Commissioner Bulkowski said. Starting with all the organizational meeting rules, we'll set forth the agenda in order for that meeting, so I think it's something we'll want to look at.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hennessy.
I, this is a point of order. We have a motion and a second on the floor.
It's a priority motion. It's a priority motion, so it does get to go first when it, when it's made the way it has been made through a point of order, and then to rearrange the, to suspend the standing rules to allow for the public comment first. Once the public comment is done, we will return to the motion to nominate Commissioner Steck, and that will go as it is on the floor right now, as having been made and seconded.
Just to be clear, we have the nomination. We have not closed the board for nominations for chair, just as a point of procedure. I already had you speak twice on the motion.
But it's in regards to a comment.
Go ahead.
Okay, just to point out, though, I understand the rules. Well beyond an organizational meeting, if you look at the temporary with all the resolutions, a lot of these meetings were.
Thank you, Commissioner. This does comply, this agenda does comply with the organizational meeting as set forth in the rules. I know it looks similar to our other agendas for general business meetings, but we do have motions and resolutions as part of the organizational meeting structure and the rules, which is, you know, what we would consider eight, or current items number nine and 10, and every, all those things that would require a motion and a resolution. But, but I do understand what you're saying, in that we do have further regular business to conduct at this meeting. Yes. Any further discussion on the motion that was made by Commissioner Antor, seconded by Commissioner Ponstein? Seeing none, we will call the vote. And also, I would ask you to pass your, Commissioner Antor, I would ask you to pass the resolution down, just so the chair has it in writing.
Is this official?
It's officially official.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
So just.
Hang on, I got Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. My question is, is this a voice vote, or is this a roll call?
It's a motion, so I'd take a roll call, correct? For agenda.
According to our standing rules, every vote, everything that comes to this board is done through a voice vote unless required by statute, so all of our stuff is by voice vote. But in this case, any, any particular commissioner has the right to request a roll call?
So is it a voice vote unless there's a request?
It is a voice vote until and unless somebody takes, yes, are you requesting a roll call?
I'd like to request a roll call.
Okay. There will be a roll call vote. Commissioner, sorry.
Just a point of clarification.
Yes, Commissioner Skaggs.
We are voting, right now, we are simply voting to suspend the rules.
For this, for this meeting only. Yes.
Then we're going to have to vote again to allow changing the agenda.
No, that's one motion. No, because this is, correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor.
He did make a compound motion to suspend the rules to, and specifically for the purpose of moving public comment up on the agenda. So unless you want to divide the question, it can be taken as a compound motion to both suspend the rules and accomplish the movement of public comment up on the agenda.
Okay, then I call to divide the question.
Okay.
I don't need a second, do I? Hang on. Division of questions.
It says it doesn't. As of Rule 3.15, if a pending motion or resolution or amendment to either contains a two or more vote, two or more parts capable of standing as separate questions, as this, as this motion does, upon the motion of any member, the board must vote on each part separately.
And as a motion, you need a second.
Is there a second to divide the question?
Sir.
Okay? There's been a motion by Commissioner Skaggs, supported by Commissioner Woodin, to divide the question of the current motion on the table.
And I don't have to take a voice vote, do I?
You have to take a vote. So it's not, it doesn't have to be.
Where does that get us, anything different?
Okay. We have a motion, and we have a second to divide the question. This is a voice vote until and unless there is a request to have a record roll call. All in favor of the motion to divide the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Roll call.
Commissioner Sparks.
What I'm not understanding is, what were the two questions be at this point?
The questions, the original motion?
Dividing the question.
Yep.
What are the two questions?
Good question. The, the division would be, well, if the motion to divide the question passes, it would then be a motion to suspend standing rules 1.2, 3.1, and 3.2.
Just stop.
And then the second que, then the second question would be taking public comment on nomination and election prior to votes on nomination and election of chair, vice chair, minority chair. Yes, Commissioner Bolter.
Thank you. So just to be clear, we're now going to be voting three times, because we're going to be voting to split, then we're voting for the first part and the second part, or we're voting twice, vote to split, and then vote for one motion.
If the motion, if the motion to split fails.
If the motion to split fails.
Yes.
So just to be clear, we're voting three times or two times, depending on how the first motion passes or fails.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair, or Madam.
Andre, what the, I'm not even sure.
If, if, no, we're only, the motion was only to suspend the three, the three specific rules, not the entire rule book.
But in length, not suspending the purposes of doing something.
They would be suspended for the purpose, for the length of this meeting.
Commissioner Woodin.
Division of questions changed this, but a suspension of the rules was only to suspend the rules to allow for a specific purpose. They were altered to allow that amendment. The entire standing rules for the organizational meeting were not suspended or thrown out as a result of this motion, correct?
Go ahead, go ahead.
The way Commissioner Antor stated his motion, he did include the specific purpose for his desire to suspend these rules. So if we want to, you know, it's up to the, the Commissioner Skaggs on his request to divide the question. If he wants to restate his motion to divide the question to include the specific purpose for the suspension, that would be up to Commissioner Skaggs.
We did, at this time, take a vote on the motion to divide the question, and the nays have it. The motion is not going to be divided.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner, Commissioner Skaggs.
Given that this motion is, has not been divided, I believe that on about the rule in front of here, that it was in violation of Rule 1.2, because it was not made immediately subsequent to the pledge of allegiance. So we've already moved on to Agenda Item 5, and we've already had a motion on the floor for Agenda Item 5. So this rule is, I think, this vote, since it's tied together now, is clearly out of order.
Commissioner Skaggs, you are referring to Rule 1.2, Paragraph 5, correct?
Correct.
Which states, immediately subsequent to the pledge of allegiance and prior to the next item on the distributed agenda, the agenda for a board may be amended, for a board, for the meeting of the board may be amended. And I have to rule, as Chair, that the motion to amend the rules is out of order. Wait a minute. Hang on.
Chair.
This was a, now the motion to Agenda Item, this was a motion to suspend the rules. So. But for the purpose of the program, I think, so now that it's a step on the line.
We have two judges in the House.
The Commission will go at recess. All right. The Board of Commissioners meeting will reconvene. We have a motion on the -- or we have a point of order on the motion that was made. The Chair recognizes Commissioner Antor. No motion is needed, just a request from -- that you withdraw your motion. The motion is withdrawn. Commissioner Antor. Is there a second on the motion to suspend standing rule 1.2? It's been moved by Commissioner Antor, supported by Commissioner Coleman, to suspend standing rule 1.2. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Hennessy. No. The motion stated to suspend, not to amend. Am I correct?
Yes, the motion was to suspend, which would mean it's under 3/8, which is only for this meeting.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay. This is a voice vote unless requested -- oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Steck. The motion on the table is to suspend standing rule 1.2. To suspend 1.2.
Rule 1.2 is our rule on agendas and how they are set.
Okay, Commissioner Coleman. Commissioner Coleman requests a roll call vote. On the motion to suspend standing rule 1.2, Commissioners Antor. Bolter.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
No.
Burl.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
No.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand. Commissioner LeGrand. Commissioner McLeod. Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs. Sparks.
Yes.
Teal. Commissioner Teal. Commissioner Womack. Wooden.
No.
Commissioner Steck. There are 12 yays, six nays. The motion passes. The standing rule 1.2 has been suspended. Commissioner Antor. Is there a second? It has been moved by Commissioner Antor and supported by Commissioner Coleman to suspend the first sentence of 3.1 and 3.2A. Is there a discussion? Commissioner Sparks.
We're trying to get to the point where the people that came today can have this up to say what they need to say. Is that right?
That is correct. Commissioner. Correct. And Commissioner Womack.
I just wanna say, I definitely support the people speaking, but the instructions are, when we are looking at the standing rules, since it's right now, it is divided up. We're not to the point talking about, we're not voting. That first motion is not -- even though it can lead to the people speaking, it had been voted on standing on its own merit when we talk about suspending the rules. Is instruction being given as you're chairing the meeting, are you giving instruction that our vote is directly tied to that? Even though we know that, some of us are voting just based upon whether we feel standing rules should be changed, you know, all the time or not.
The current motion is a standalone motion to suspend the first sentence of one rule and the first paragraph of another rule. It is not explicitly in the motion tied to a why or a purpose.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel. Any further discussion? Commissioner Skaggs.
Just a question for Counsel. Can we get this restated? What does it mean? What does the first paragraph mean? We have a paragraph, and then we have the order of business. And are we getting rid of the order of business?
Under -- the motion under 3.2 is to suspend 3.2A, which would include items 1 through 15, the set-out order of business. About the order of business in the organizational meeting, not about the nominations and election of Chairs. That's why the motion calls out only Paragraph A and not Paragraph B.
And that's if the motion passes.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Womack. There's just one on the table at this time. Commissioner Steck.
Correct. Correct. The suspension where these 15 items are set in priority or in order, that would be suspended, which would allow a subsequent motion to change the order of the agenda. Correct.
If one is so inclined.
Right, and so in the motion to make a change to the agenda, it should set out exactly what change is sought, so that when this Board looks at a motion, should it be made about how to reorder the items on the agenda, it's clear as to what item comes next and how they're reordered.
In theory. Commissioner Wooden.
There's a question. Since Rule 1.2 is already -- and since 3.8A allows suspension or alteration, could a motion be -- could not be amended to say to temporarily alter Rule 3.1 and 3.2A to move Item 9 or Item 4 and Item 5, thereby eliminating the need for a subsequent motion? And...
To take each piece separately, in part due to some of the discussion that happened earlier in this meeting about a compound question. If the person making the motion or somebody wanted to make an amendment, it'd be up to this Board to take it as a -- if they wanted to take it as a compound question or not. But right now, the motion on the table is to just do the suspension of the first sentence of 3.1 and the 3.2A.
This is a voice vote at this time, unless anybody requests a roll call vote. On the motion to adopt -- or I'm sorry, on the motion to suspend the first sentence of 3.1 and 3.2A, all in favor say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion passes, the first sentence of 3.1 and 3.2A is suspended. Commissioner Antor. Is there a second? It's been moved by Commissioner Antor and supported by Commissioner Green to amend the agenda to move Item 8, public comment, to become Item 5. Is there a discussion? Commissioner Steck. You'd like to amend your motion? It is in writing. Okay, any other discussion? Commissioner Antor has agreed to a friendly amendment to reaffirm the rest of the agenda order and items. Is there any further discussion? This is a voice vote unless someone calls for a record roll call. It has been on the motion made by Commissioner Anto -- Thank you. Commissioner Sparks. Thank you. Commissioner Wooden. I'm sorry, Commissioner Womack. Thank you, Commissioner. Just to clarify, that would be next March, that you would come before to make the change, unless there is a 2/3 majority that would agree to amend the suspend -- the standing rules at any time. Yes, any other further discussion? Okay, this is a voice vote unless record roll call is requested. On the motion made by Commissioner Antor and supported by Commissioner Green to amend the agenda to move Item 8, public comment, to become Item 5, and reaffirm the rest of the agenda and order, all in favor say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion passes. We will move Agenda Item 8, public comment, to become Agenda Item 5, and the rest of the agenda is affirmed. That was a priority motion and became priority motions. At this time, we will go back to our agenda. We have -- the floor is open for nominations for Chair of the Board. Oh my gosh! I told you, it's the ham and candy! Yes, we will now move to Agenda Item Number 5, the new Agenda Item Number 5, the public comment on items relating only to the agenda. Do we have any public comment today? As a reminder, anyone who wishes to speak has three minutes to do so at this time. Happy New Year.
Leadership that's able to reach across the aisle, leadership that's able to exercise critical thought, and leadership that's gonna do right by us because we consent to be governed. So wake up. Do what's right.
Would you like your name for the record?
Concerned Citizen.
You bet. Thank you, Mr. Concerned Citizen.
Actually, Sean Cordier, if you want to write down. I've been here enough, you guys--
Yeah, we know, just wanted to make sure it was on the record if you wanted it. So, any further public comment before we move on to the agenda items? Good morning. State your name if you'd like it on the record as well.
Very painful hour of sitting here in the audience, what you guys figured out how to allow us to have a voice. Really appreciate that and really appreciate the decisions that you guys came to. When we look at what's happened over the last year, there's clearly been a divide, as the previous speaker said. And some of that division has been driven by members of this board failing to work together, failing to be leaders. And you guys all are to lead by example. You're to hold yourselves to the highest ethical standards in regards when it comes to this office that we've elected you to hold. Now, some of you, I think all of you, are aware that the nomination from the Minority Caucus may have had ethical issues, I'll just say, when it comes to leveraging his position on the DPW Board for his own personal gain and benefit. That is not a leader. So to the Democrats here, I ask you, please, is that who you want to represent you? Let your conscience drive your decisions today for all of these positions. It's not about party. It's about who's best for that role, who's going to represent you properly as you guys move to do the important business that we have to do as we rebuild the country, which starts with this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? No, yep. Good morning. State your name if you'd like it on the record.
Good morning. My name is Stephanie Boone. And Happy New Year to everyone, and thank you so much for voting to allow for our public comment at this time. And I don't have a whole lot to say other than just thinking about, I would ask each of you, when it comes time to vote for that Minority Vice Chair, the one that was fighting tooth and nail to stop the public comment at this time is the one who will be nominated for that position. So vote with your heart and think about that, that alone. Why was he fighting so hard to not allow our comments at this time? What are you afraid of? Think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? All right. At this time, we will continue with our agenda. And we will move back to election of Board Chair. We do have the Board, the floor is open for nominations. We have a nomination supported, made by Bolter and supported by Womack for Commissioner Stan Steck. Are there any more nominations?
I move that nomination to close, you know--
Okay, it has been moved, it has been moved by Commissioner Morgan and supported by Commissioner Breevy to close nominations and cast a unanimous ballot in support of Commissioner Steck. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Welcome, Mr. Chair, and good luck. Can't get to my seat fast enough. I'll get it.
Okay. It's too late to opt out, isn't it? Well, thank you so much for that expression of support. And I have more comments that I will make, but this has proved to be a fairly challenging meeting already, and we have a big agenda ahead of us, so if we still have patience at the end of the meeting, I'll make some more comments. My first official act, though, will be to order lunch, so make sure that your orders are clear. All right. That is all, of course, facetious. We will be moving on to the next item of business, which is the election of the Vice Chair Office of this Board. This is pursuant to Rule 3.2 of the Standing Rules, and so I will open the floor for nominations. And once we have nominations, determine that there is a second for that nomination, and then proceed from there. So I'm opening the floor for nominations. Yes, Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I move to nominate Commissioner Breevy for the position of Vice--
There is motion to nominate Emily Breevy as the Vice Chair by Commissioner Green. It is supported by Commissioner Morgan. Are there any other nominations? Are there any--
Mr. Chair, I move that nomination to be closing. You know, that would be cast for Vice Chair Breevy.
Motion has been made to close the nominations and to unanimously elect Commissioner Breevy as the Vice Chair. This is a voice vote motion, so all those, unless there is a request for a roll call, I don't see one, so all those that support say yes.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Supported by Green? Now it's appropriate. All those that support that motion say yes.
Yes.
Those that oppose the motion say no. It is supported. Congratulations, Emily, on being the Vice Chair.
Thank you.
All right. Likewise, I'll ask if you have any comments at the end, unless you feel compelled to say something now. I would rather do that later.
I'll wait till the end.
All right. Let's move to the next item on the agenda, which is election of the Minority Vice Chair. This process is slightly different because of the changes that we implemented in our standing rules back in March of 2021. So let me just review the process that will be applied for purposes of addressing this Board position. First of all, the timing of this, of course, is set forth in our rules on the standing order. The process for nominations is Rule 3.2(c)(1), which provides that we will open the floor for nominations. Any member may make a nomination, and there may be multiple nominations. No second for that nomination is appropriate, and I will not take seconds for the nomination. We will then move to Rule 3.2(c)(2), which is the rule that addresses the support required to proceed further. Under that rule, I will determine whether or not there is sufficient support for a nomination, and will take them in the order they're submitted. The support to be considered by the full Board is this. First, it must be confirmed by me that the member being nominated is not a member of my party, to assure that that is in fact a minority member. And second, I must determine whether or not there is sufficient support from the Minority Caucus under Rule 3.2(c)(2). If there is sufficient support for a member nominated, then we will move to the next phase, which is voting. Voting will be subject to the determination of the Board under Rule 3.5. And that is a call for an acceptance for the nomination or rejection, and unless there is a call for a roll call vote under 35b9, which there may be, in which case we'll do it by roll call. Under Rule 3.9, it takes a simple majority of this Board approval in order to be elected. So with that-- Yes, Commissioner-- As with any issue brought before the Board, there will be opportunity for discussion after the nomination is confirmed. All right. I will open the floor for nominations. Are there any nominations? Yes, Commissioner Hennessy.
I would like to nominate those gigs.
All right. Motion has been, a nomination has been made for Commissioner Skaggs for the Office of Minority Vice Chair. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? I do not need a second. There'll be no seconds until I go back and ask for the support. If there are no other nominations, declare the nominations closed. There is one nominee, therefore Rule 3.2(c)(4) does not apply. We'll move to Rule 3.5 to submit this to the full Board. Yes, Commissioner Wooden. 3.5(c) provides under the method of voting, unless it is identified with respect to a roll call, quote, "all other measures will be voted by voice vote." That is my ruling, that that is the applicable rule for the vote.
Understandable. I just simply would pose that because we have one nominee, and our standing rule states that when there is such ambiguity, that we should defer to Roberts or statute, since this is a non-statutory office, I took the liberty of reviewing the provision in Roberts. And under Rule 46.1, in the Department of Justice, it covers nominations and elections, it does state an importance that rather than moving that a given person be elected, rather it should be voting for one candidate or another. Hence, a form, in fact, it explicitly states, hence a form of ballot on which provision is made voting quote-unquote "for" or quote-unquote "against" a candidate or candidates as distinguished from a motion is not proper. Since such a ballot is improper, in order to defeat a candidate in office, it is necessary to vote for an opposing candidate, thus avoiding the anomaly of an assembly refusing to elect anyone to an office. I do think that's pertinent, and given the fact that our election process for one candidate is more ambiguous by our standing rules, that we should-- and while a voice vote is required, I would simply pose that it should be of those candidates for this position, even if there's--
Your point of order is heard. I have certainly spent a significant amount of time over the last week poring through one of my favorite books now, Robert's Rules of Order, as well as our standing rules. Rule 3.18 of our standing rules provides that if there is a procedure that is not provided for in our rules, then we would default over to the Roberts Rules. It's my ruling that we do have a procedure in our standing rules that addresses every aspect of the process of nominating, supporting, voting, and the amount of voting that is required in order to be elected, and therefore Roberts Rules are not applicable in this particular process. We are to proceed with the nomination, as I indicated, under 3.2(c)(1), the supporting process, which is under 3.2(c)(2). Since 3.4 does not apply, we go back to the rule's subsequent determination that Rule 3.5, which provides, quote, "all other measures will be voted by voice vote," that that is then the applicable rule. It is adopted by us as being the process for taking this up. And the Rule 3.9, which provides that unless there is a special requirement for a supermajority, which is not applicable here, I conclude, 3.9 is the applicable measure for what kind of vote is required, and that is, it requires a simple majority of the Board members present. So that's my ruling.
Appeal both chairs, Wood.
You have the right to appeal that ruling. And as a consequence, we will take a-- we will take a vote on the appeal of my ruling. That is pursuant to Rule 314. Under Rule 314, the ruling of the Chair on a matter of procedure is to be submitted to the Board on the question of will the ruling of the Chair be sustained? If it is to be sustained, you are to vote yes. If it is to be overturned, you are to vote no. Is that clear? I should clear it. If my ruling on how the rules are to be applied is sustained, you are to vote-- thank you for asking me to clarify. If my ruling is to be sustained, then you should vote no on the point of order.
So if we agree with you, we should vote no?
You should vote no. If you disagree with my ruling, you should vote yes on the point of order.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman--
Yes, Commissioner Morgan.
Mine's getting ahead of my mouth here. So if we think you're on solid ground as Chair, we should vote no?
The point is an appeal of my decision, so you would vote no to the appeal.
So he made a motion to overturn your decision, right?
He made an appeal of my decision, and if you agree with his appeal, you should vote yes. If you disagree with his appeal, you should vote no.
I think I got it.
And this is, just so it's clear, this is a, the one circumstance under the rules in which the Chair does not vote, only the non-Chair members vote on this appeal. I think there was another point here. I'm sorry, Commissioner Wooden was first. All right. Commissioner, yes, Womack.
Could the legal counsel speak upon what is now on the table?
Can she speak to what's on the table?
Well, we have, we have two opinions here, and--
This is an interpretation of the rules, and so you have the Chair's interpretation, and you have Commissioner Wooden challenging that interpretation. They are the body's rules, so it's up to the body to determine which interpretation they want to follow.
If I can also clarify, under Rule 1.3b, our standing rules make it my obligation as the Chair to make all questions of order and determinations. So as the Chair, I'm obligated to make those rulings unless there is an appeal that overturns that. Yes? I'm sorry, Commissioner Sparks.
I need to understand what Commissioner Wooden was saying again, please.
Mike? I'm sorry? Why did he--
Put this forward. We haven't voted yet, but--
Correct. So my understanding is that my ruling, under my responsibility as the Chair, is that Roberts Rules do not apply because our standing rules have sufficient procedures that address the process for addressing this nomination, the support, and the election. The Commissioner has raised a point of order asserting that my ruling is in error and it should be overruled, and that Roberts Rules of Orders should apply.
More or less, it is the fact that because, as I presented in my point of order-- forgive me, I should have asked for the floor.
You may have the floor, Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If we're talking about the rules, we should call them. The fact that our standing rules are largely silent on how an election should be conducted when there is one candidate, and when we are, when our standing rules are silent, it says prefer to statute or the courts. Chair Steck has ruled that 3.5, which simply states that, it's a-- that a voice vote requirement that is tied to a majority of members present is necessary. And I'm not contending. What I am simply contending is that under Roberts, which is the other body of work we tie to when there's ambiguity, states that if you vote yes or no-- we tie to when there's ambiguity, states that a vote yes or no is out of order when it comes to an election, and you have to vote for him. So I am not objecting to a voice vote. I am objecting to a vote stating that if a vote is to be conducted, it should be conducted exclusively by the nominee. And it is because, as Roberts noted, it creates an anomaly, if you allow a yes or no vote, of an assembly potentially refusing to elect anyone. That's why Roberts moved.
All right. Any other... Yes, Commissioner Coleman.
But I'll be voting no on the appeal because I support the chair's ruling. And my colleague has that a procedure that we've, we have twice.
Yep. Commissioner Womack.
As we're discussing this interpretation, we really understand both our chairs coming from... Consistent fact that we do have on the book and standing... So last year, with us not having something on the, on the standing rules that covered that I needed a second to run for minority vice chair when I was not allowed to run for minority vice chair after I was nominated, because there was no second. I was mocked, I was laughed at, and very insulting. I want to know, how did we not confer the Roberts rules of order when we not needed if it wasn't on the...
Well, I think that's... Respond to that. I think that that is slightly a field of the issue that's presently before us. And I will say that the rules were subsequently amended after last year to provide for an alternative mechanism for seconding, which we'll address after we get through this process. So... You know what? The question is being asked.
Commissioner, if I understand your question correctly, just the same way our rules talk about everything in, in the chamber is on a, on a voice vote under 3.5, when a motion is made, under our general rules about motion practice, there's a second required. Again, as we dealt with this morning and last year, the nominations prior to the amendment of the rules last year, and the nominations that have already gone through for chair and vice chair, did get a second this morning.
My point is that there is not a second as we traditionally require it under the standing rules for a nominee for minority vice chair. There is a seconding process that we will take up momentarily, and that seconding process is to determine whether or not there are sufficient supports from the minority caucus for a candidate to proceed. And that is, it requires a majority of the minority seconding or supporting that. And we'll get to that seconding process. The nomination will be submitted for a second. Well, my ruling is that we do have standing rules that address the process for the elections today. That's correct. Yep. Any other discussion before we take the vote? Yes, Commissioner Morgan. Again, I'll repeat that just before the vote, just to be clear. All right. Hang in there. Yes, Commissioner Skaggs. Oh, well, Commissioner Wooden has had two shots at this already, so in fairness.
Okay, so my, thank you, Chair. My understanding is that I developed these, these standing rules on the election of the minority vice chair just, just eight months ago. And I think we developed these, and it worked. I think we, we developed these so that the nominations would come from the minority caucus and that there would really only ever be one nominee from the minority caucus. That would be held under subsection C2 valid. The whole thing was set up so that there would be one nominee, because it clearly states that no member of the minority party may vote and offer support for more than one candidate for the position. It is a requirement to get a majority of the minority, and there is only one possibility with eight members. Majority is five. You can only vote for one person. It is impossible for two people to get five votes out of ten is larger than eight. Therefore, it is clear that we are in a position where there is only one nominee. And at that point, given that it is not in the standing... Because it didn't need to be in the standing rule number four, in the event of multiple nominations. We don't have not, multiple nominations that have required the support. It's impossible to have it. So we simply should do what Roberts rule says. There's one nominee. The nomination will shortly be in order under number two. And the chair, at that point, I think, required to simply state that the nominee...
Any other comments? I think, again, yes, Commissioner Antor. All right. You're requesting a third opportunity to... Pardon me? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Skaggs, did you have a second opportunity you're requesting? All right. Any other comments? Commissioner Wooden, you wanted one last opportunity?
This is a clarification to, to my colleague's point, and it's a fair one. But I think it should be noted that the previous votes that were taken were in motion to close nominations, so that a unanimous ballot be cast. And seeing that there is no motion to close nominations, that the chair has in fact closed nominations already, and the fact that under our standing rules that were amended, the chair and vice chair elections no longer even require a move, the motion to close nominations, the chair can simply, when we agree, I would simply pose that that yes or no vote that was taken in the two previous elections is not equivalent. Had a no vote heard, it wouldn't have invalidated that candidate's election. It would have simply kept the nomination open. And so I, I just, I think that's an important clarification.
All right. And then Commissioner Ponsting.
Well, I first want to apologize to everyone who's watching TV and everyone that's in the audience. I mean, we are well past an hour and a half, just... I'll get on our high horse. This is, um, caucus decides this and that. Never once do we ask, who is the best candidate to serve in those positions? And I think the public deserves that. And you ask yourself, why the public comes here, are so cynical about what we did? We've got pages and pages and pages of... Really, I mean, just listen to this. I mean, it's personal on how we operate, personal on how we pick our, you know, people on to a certain clique within your caucus. You know, you've got a better chance than someone that just wants to serve that may be qualified itself.
All right. Commissioner Womack, your second chance.
I knew from reading the standing rules that we had a right. Someone else having more votes. Oh, us to have two people run because there was... I don't know if you felt that deeply about it. But, you know, also looking at my caucus, I want to have peace. I know ethnically that it was kind of embarrassing for our caucus. I don't, I don't, when I, when I actually process it, just because I want to make sure we're following rules and that will benefit the next commissioners after us. And I just want to apologize and let Commissioner Skaggs know that it isn't anything to attack him. I'll be supporting our caucus pick today, but I just want to make sure, as we look at this meeting, that two elections down the line, three and six, that we could be able to move this in fifteen minutes. So that's my question, some of the rules, make sure we get those right, I think.
I appreciate your optimism on timing. It's... So just to clarify then, as we go into the voting process, it is my ruling that is subject to question on the appeal. My ruling is that under 318, Roberts rules of orders do not apply to this process because we have sufficient procedures in our standing rules to address each of the phases of how we handle an election in this process, including how we take nominations, how we obtain support, that all questions then go to a voice vote before this full board. And under 3.9, it is to be a simple majority. The proposed application of Roberts suggests is a fairly sharp, attentive application of these rules that would have the net effect of essentially allowing for the election of a board officer position without this board being able to vote on that question. So I simply do not accept that as being a reasonable application of our rules in their totality. They require all matters to be submitted to this board, certainly a matter of this significance on whether or not a person sits in the officer position before this board. So that's my ruling. It's been appealed, and the question before you is, do you support the appeal of my ruling? If you do, you should say yes. If you do not support the appeal of my ruling and support my ruling, you should say no. Question roll call vote. Roll call vote has been requested.
Of the chair. Commissioners Antle.
No.
Boulter.
No.
Vice Chair Brady.
No.
Commissioners Blakowski.
Yes.
Burrow.
No.
Green.
No.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
No.
Coleman.
No.
LeGrand. Poe.
Yes.
Morgan.
No.
Hacks.
Yes.
Hart.
No.
O'Mack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
I don't believe I have a right to vote under the rules. All right. With that, we will then move with the, with the determination of whether or not there's sufficient support for the nomination. And again, under Rule 3.2C2, for a nomination to proceed to the full board, there must be at least a majority of the minority caucus that supports that nomination, and that is of the members elect. So that would require five members of the minority caucus identifying that they support the nomination. I will look to my minority friends and colleagues to see if there are any supports. Okay, it is supported by Commissioner Wooden. Supported by Commissioner Blakowski. Yes. Supported by Commissioner Hennessy. Supported by Commissioner Womack. I need one more. I shouldn't say I don't need one more. Is there one more? Commissioner McCleod.
Mr. Chair.
There are... Yes, I requested determination whether there are at least five members of the minority caucus that support the nomination, and I have supports expressed by Commissioner Blakowski, Commissioner Hennessy, Commissioner Womack, Commissioner McCleod, and Commissioner Wooden. All right. The nomination... All right. Only need five, but I have that. So at this point, I will confirm on the record that the nominee is not a member of my party, so the nomination is appropriate. I will then submit it to the full board for consideration. Question before the board is, do we fill the position of minority vice chair with Commissioner Skaggs? Yes or no? Yes, Commissioner? Antor. If there is a commissioner wishes to address the question before the board, and you wish to address the question?
Yes.
Well, I think I'm the one that determines whether you have full time. You're using it up, by the way.
To work together. And it was done for all the right reasons, kind of like Tip O'Neill and Ronald Reagan back in the day. They, they worked together, and it was kind of nice to see that could happen. But unfortunately, no good deed goes unpunished. And now this position is being gamed to create this controversy where we never had any controversy. In fact, as I mentioned, the rules just change standing rules. In my opinion, to keep Robert O'Mack... That's just wrong. I don't care how you, you gain, how you, you know, what verb did you use? Now it's obvious all this, we didn't want Robert. I'll let the folks decide what reason they could have to keep Robert off. Robert, I hate to do this to you, it might hurt your future political campaigns, but I actually do like you, I respect you. You say what's on your mind, you wear it. We couldn't be more different. We discussed a lot of things, but I respect you because you put it out there, you wear it on the sleeve. And personally, I've had to endure countless attacks on me through countless points of order going back between heckling and jefl here, you know, calling me out for not... order going back between heckling and jefl here, you know, calling me out for not, you know, going over my time limit and standing up in the... As if what I have to say about kids and about mandates and about teachers and parents has no importance. So badly to muzzle me, they actually scheme. How can we screw with... Well, for that reason, I think we should do away with this, and I know we can't. We have a majority on this board that can actually undo that because it's never intended to be a political... All this stuff that's going on, we've got a guy who's got issues, you know, inconsistency, lack of transparency, possibly nepotism on steroids by his caucus. I don't trust the caucus anymore. I used to, when I first came here, we got along great. We talked together. We didn't always agree, but it was a lot friendlier, and it was just, we could get the business done a lot quicker, and we all felt good about it. So I just think the maturity level being shown by some in this chamber is like that in nine-year-olds. This isn't kindergarten. I'm one of the oldest guys on this board. I would at least ask for a little bit of respect for my time served. I don't have any angst, random honesty towards anybody when I come in here. Public in general, look at all of us before we move on. I haven't addressed those comments.
All right. Commissioner Breavy.
Thank you, Chair Steck. So the position of minority vice chair was established before I joined the board, but I've come to learn that the position was created to provide a collaborative working relationship between the two parties. The minority vice chair is the person selected as a leader and voice of the minority party at the board level. When I think of a successful leader, the first words that come to my mind are honesty and integrity. Leaders also need to have ethics and a strong moral compass. There are several members of the minority caucus who would be excellent candidates for minority vice chair. Recent decisions and actions by Commissioner Skaggs have proven to me that he is unsuitable to serve in leadership on the Board of Commissioners as minority vice chair. He lacks the ethics and moral compass to serve in leadership capacity. I have not seen any strong collaborative efforts, but only divisive behavior. Commissioner Skaggs is a member of the Board of Public Works upon which I serve as chair. Upon hearing rumors about a romantic relationship he was having, I confronted him. He admitted to having this romantic relationship with a lobbyist who was currently working on a project for the Department of Public Works. The fact that he thought this was okay and not a conflict is dead wrong and shows that he lacks ethics and morals. I'm not willing to continue cleaning up after Commissioner Skaggs and risk jeopardizing county projects because of his actions. As elected leaders, we should all be held to a higher standard. The actions of Commissioner Skaggs are exactly why the public despises politicians. Commissioner Skaggs is unfit to serve as minority vice chair, and anyone supporting him for this role is condoning these actions. Thank you.
Commissioner Ponstein.
My question is just clarification. This private note, Linda. Why is the standing rules, and I've never sat on that rule, I've been a huge fan of... Highlighted today of all this that we're jumping through, but why is it that the minority vice chair nomination, after the chair and vice chair, you don't have that control for all the people that we elect?
If I can address that, Commissioner, because I sat on that, that rule, standing rule committee that generated these last set of rules. And the majority of a minority, as the seconding process, was developed in conversations with members of that committee to address concerns that the majority caucus could unilaterally force a minority vice chair member on the minority caucus. And out of concern that that would not happen, it provided that the person who is to be elected as a minority vice chair has to have at least two things satisfied. One, they have to have at least the support of a majority of the minority caucus. And two, they have to have the support and vote of at least a majority of the full board. So that's the genesis for that.
I'll just add, I'm not questioning what you just said, then. I would think it'd be more important that just someone threw that position, but... So I guess this question then is for Linda. We go through all these hoops to appoint these people. What can the full board of commissioners do to remove...
Yep. Well, it is.
I might suggest to Commissioner Ponstein, it is a question that may not be directly relevant to the matter before the board, though it may be a very relevant question. And I would invite you to have a substantive response from corporate counsel on that issue. Is that acceptable?
That is acceptable, Chair.
Yep, thank you. Any further comments? Commissioner Skaggs.
Thank you, Chair. So... First off, I just want to thank my fellow Democrats for their unanimous support. I think that each of you brings a valuable input to this board, and it is an honor to have earned your continued support. I don't have much other to say, I guess, other than, you know, we have a political culture on this board. It's gone back for, for years. And that was a, a culture of collaboration, that we worked together, and that work together was based on mutual respect, mutual respect for each other's caucus. That's what I'm asking for today. Our caucus has unanimously nominated one person, and one person only. And, Mr. Chair, can we have order in the, in the room?
Please, no comments from the, from the gallery while we're gauging our debate.
So what I am simply asking here is that we continue that process of mutual respect between, between caucuses. The political culture that we've created has been one of mutual respect. Doesn't mean that we're always going to agree. We're going to disagree from time to time. We're going to have principal disagreements, not political disagreements, principal disagreements. And we've had those. It doesn't mean that we're not going to have contested elections. We're going to have contested elections. The Democrats are going to support Democrats in those elections, and Republicans are going to support Republicans. That's the way our democratic system works. Now, there's been some, some indications that people believe that I've not acted in a collaborative manner. I want to note a couple of facts. Number one, when Commissioner Bolter was the chair, there was not a single vote on the board or in any committee from me that was opposed to the chair. We voted the same on every single vote. That's pretty rare. I don't think we see that in Lansing. I know we don't. We don't see it in DC, but we see it here. Why do we see it here? Because Mandy and I built a relationship, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bolter and I, built a relationship of mutual respect and trust. We didn't always agree with each other. There were some late-night emotions, but we came to agreements. I understood she's got 11 votes. There are only eight Democrats. But we were able to do what we felt and come to a consensus on so many issues for the betterment of the, for our constituents. I also want to argue that there was no single-party line vote this entire session until the last vote of the LHR committee, which was simply over a board appointment. So the idea that there has been ages of division, just, I don't think meshes with the reality when we get to votes. Now, what are some of the things that we built broad consensus on? We hired a county administrator unanimously. We are one of the most divided, as far as partisan makeup of our board goes, in the entire state. Washtenaw's mostly Democrat, other counties are mostly Republican. We're very divided here in our numbers. Yet we, and the most important thing we did, we voted unanimously for Al Van Edberg. We voted unanimously for the budget. When we had problems with the CAA, with our representative on the CAA, I sat down with Commissioner Bolter and Commissioner Steck. We had a difficult conversation with that member of the CAA, but we worked together beforehand and during that meeting and after that meeting to ensure that the interests of the county surrounding the clinic were implemented. I also worked with Commissioner Bolter and others on our caucus and on others on our first-ever county statement against racism and the development of our chief inclusion Also, not long ago, we issued a joint statement between Commissioner Steck, Commissioner Bolter and I, that denounced political violence that happened in Washington, DC, and the attacks on Congress and the public safety officers defending them. That was a joint thing that we did together. So there have been countless examples of collaboration. It's not going to always happen. We did have disagreements, but these were principal disagreements on both sides. We disagreed about a public health order. We disagreed about our response to threats of violence against our staff. We talked about those in private. We decided in our caucus, all of us, voted for one or two, or signed one or two of our statements in support of our public health department, the mask requirement, and opposition to statements that encourage violence against our staff. So these were simply principal disagreements, and they're going to happen. We're in a place where we have that. So I would urge us to step back from this brink. We have a lot to do coming up. We have a sustainable business park. We have ARPA funds. We have another budget. We have the amphitheater. We have the aquarium. We have so much going on. Let us not destroy this culture that has been built by, for the first time ever, vetoing the clear and obvious nomination of our caucus. The, lastly, I just want to comment to Commissioner Breavy. This is something that was new to me. When we had our discussion, it was clear that you were only talking about optics. Those were the exact words that you used. I believe you said there is no conflict of interest, that you had discussed with corporate counsel, and that there was no conflict of interest because there is no financial relationship with Womack or any of its partners. So I just dispute any accusations about integrity on that matter. But to get back to it, I simply want to say, let us move on, and I urge you to respect our caucus and vote for its sole nominee. Thank you.
Further questions? Commissioner Wooden, then Commissioner Coleman, then Commissioner... I'll answer you just once. I'll come back to you if there's no others.
So I want to echo many of the previous comments and practice that I think I would be making these comments if we were in the same situation with a number nominee. The fact of the matter is, to me, this is a decision about respecting the Democratic caucus's choice. You know, the organizational meeting is historically one where we set the tone for the year. And I know I've only been present for three of them, but we have, we have used this to set the tone for the, for the going of the year. And it starts with a sign of mutual respect in the choices each caucus's provide for leadership. The chair and vice chair elect candidates were elected unanimously. I'm proud of that. I'm very proud of the people we have elected to those positions. Similarly, I simply ask that the Democratic caucus's choice for minority vice chair is respected, because when this, if this candidate is voted down, you're not just saying no to that one person, you're saying no to all eight of us, that this was the candidate that we provided our unanimous support for. And in the end, we're trying to create a culture of inclusion, a culture of exchange, so that we can work together and advance bipartisan achievements like we did in the last year. It's about making sure that all eight of us are respected. And so I would simply ask that we preserve and respect this tradition, so that we can serve the year up. Thanks.
Commissioner Coleman, you were next.
Thank you, Chair. I'll try to speak up since I don't think my mic is working still, but...
You rarely have a problem, so go ahead.
Good. So, so last year at this time, I, my, my preference, you know, would have been to vote in favor of Commissioner Womack for minority vice chair, given some concerns, you know, with Commissioner Skaggs. At that time, you know, I felt it, you know, prudent to do what had been the, the convention, you know, is to allow the minority party to, to fill that position. And, and yet I think that clearly, even with the rule changes from this past March, to attempt to push that convention, you know, to even stronger rules, structure in the standing rules, there clearly is a voice for the whole Board of Commissioners on this because the executive officers of this board provide representation to the community more than, you know, your average member like myself. And so I think Vice Chair Breavy stated with great clarity the increasing concerns of the commissioner that's being nominated that, that are out there, and that that representation on the executive board would not be well-suited. And that is, that is the responsibility of all of us as the full board to, to make that assessment, and I'll be making that, that vote here soon.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Just, again, just a few minutes ago when Commissioner Skaggs was speaking, I think somebody hiccupped or coughed or maybe murmured something. Immediately he asked, Chair, can I please have order on the floor? It's the same guy that two years ago, we had people flooding in the room, blowhorns, signs, charging us month after month, screaming all kinds of vulgarities at all of us. He called it a democracy in action. He loved it. That to him, that separates us. Mutual respect, Phil, needs to be earned. Excuse me?
Just address the chair, please.
Yes, I'm sorry. You'll do that again. I think mutual respect needs to be earned. And what we're seeing is hypocrisy on steroids. You've got words coming out of Commissioner Skaggs's mouth. Doesn't fit what's actually happening. Parents, we should have been here probably in greater numbers had they known we had public comment today at the beginning, and would have been. I'm representing them as well. I'm proud of the parents that come out, take time from their jobs, take time from their kids, take time from everything to come in here. I always say that, regardless of the people that speak. They could be total opposite from me, but I respect the fact they come here. And for Commissioner Skaggs to belittle them the way he did, not only in what he said and what he wrote, put out there on social media, we just can't do that. Okay? These people came for a reason, and to be belittled and now they're part of this, you know, terrorist group, according to the FBI, people that come to meetings, especially school shootings, are not terrorists. So for Commissioner Skaggs to ask for order all of a sudden in this process is laughable, is inconsistent, and is an embarrassment for him. And I think it's an embarrassment for all the Democrats to support him. I mean, how far down, how low are we going to lower that bar to get somebody that's qualified and is willing to work as a team? That's my question. Thank you.
Great. Just remind Commissioners, you're allowed two comments to, to the board on each question. So, all right, any other comments? Yes, Commissioner Breavy, your second.
Thank you, Chair. This will be my second and last, but I just want to clarify for the record. I did meet with corporate counsel regarding the relationship that Commissioner Skaggs had, and it was determined to be a conflict of interest.
All right. Please, thank you. Any other comments from Commissioners on the question? Any other comments from Commissioners on the question?
If not, before I call the question, just a couple of comments. This is, this is clearly a remarkable debate that we're having, and remarkable in a couple of ways. One, I think it's remarkable that as a, as a public body, we are debating the question of offering a minority caucus an opportunity to serve in a true governing role with this board. And I mean a governing role, not just a office that has a nice title to it. This is a position that we delegate under our standing rules to serve as the number three in line to serve as the chair of this entire board. And one might think that's highly unusual, but in today's world, I'm not sure that's all that improbable that the disease or circumstances of life might generate that possibility. But we also offer this position, the specific responsibility to serve as the number two in the event that a standing committee chair is incapacitated. And finally, it is a position that gives immediately the authority to sit in the executive committee deliberating with the rest of the officers on all of the policy direction of this board. So it's a significant role that we are offering and asking to be filled. The second is note that this is a board officer position. It is not a caucus position. It is a board officer position, and the individual who's elected into this position is responsible to the board as a whole and is representative of this board as a whole. I think the concerns that have been raised are not intended to show disrespect for the minority caucus. It is not intended to show a lack of collaboration. In fact, I'd suggest that the whole purpose of this, of this position is to advance collaboration. And so I suggest it is not an inappropriate ask of this board that the individual who serves in this role be measured with respect to the board members' assessment of their commitment to collaboration, their commitment to respect of all of the members, and respect for all of the constituencies in this county. I think that's legitimate. How you determine to measure that is up to your own discretion. But those are legitimate assessments, in my opinion. So at this point, we are to make a determination on whether this is the candidate that best sits that role, and sits that role not just for the caucus but for the board as a whole. Because this is a decision that has to be made by the caucus, and it needs to be made by this board. So that's the decision we will have to make. I will ask for a voice vote on this decision unless there is a request for a roll call.
Request for roll call vote.
Okay. Request has been made for a roll call vote, which is appropriate and in order. Therefore, we will go ahead and take a roll call vote. The vote to be voted on is this. The question is, do we fill the position of the minority vice chair with the nominee Commissioner Skaggs? If you agree, you vote yes. If you do not agree, you vote no. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the nomination for Commissioner Phil Skaggs for minority vice chair, Commissioners Antor.
No.
Bolter.
No.
Vice Chair Breevy.
No.
Commissioner...
Yes.
Burl.
No.
Green.
No.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
No.
Coleman.
No.
LeGrand.
Oh, yes.
Morgan.
No.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
No.
Mr. Chair, you have seven yeas, ten nays. The motion for the nomination for Phil Skaggs does not pass.
Quiet, quiet, please. All right. Since there were no other nominations made at the time the nominations were open, I am going to determine that at this point, the office of minority vice chair remains vacant, and pursuant to the Rule 1.7, a vacancy in a board officer position is to be addressed and taken up by the board no later than the second meeting following the vacancy. So this matter will be resubmitted to the board in the next meeting or no later than the meeting thereafter. Yes, point of order from Commissioner Antor.
Thank you. That's under current standing rules, not...
That is the standing rule 1.7. That's correct.
Thank you.
All right.
Can we take a bathroom drink?
Right. So we're up to the consent agenda, and there's been a, a request with some degree of urgency that we take a short recess of five minutes, and we will reconvene in approximately five Let's go ahead and call to order. All right. Let's move to the next item of business, which is the consent agenda. And before I call on Commissioner Bolter, I understand I've had a request to remove Item D, approval of the 63rd District Court Administrator Danielle Castillo as magistrate, to remove that from the consent agenda and to take that independently.
That is correct, Chair, because this is such an august appointment, we should have a roll call vote in her honor.
All right. That request is granted. So other than that, I will call on Commissioner Bolter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move today's consent agenda.
Moved and supported by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions on the issue? If not, I'm sorry, yes, Commissioner Ponstein.
I'm in the corner of your eyeglass. Thank you, Chair Steck. So I understand I'm going to be commenting on a closed session minute. I will not mention anything in there, but I think my question should be a reasonable. I made a comment during it regarding point number one, and the way it is stated doesn't take into effect that the comments that I made were stating that what is stated in one is incorrect according to the meetings that I attended prior to that meeting. So I don't know if we need to, I don't want to go into closed session to discuss this or just delay this, but it was an important thing that I said regarding point one, and it was left out.
If you're making a comment, I understand if you are intending to make a motion to amend the minutes, we'll have to go into a closed session to do that.
Yeah, and I understand that, but, but I made those comments in the closed session to correct that, and they weren't, so...
I, I hear you and I understand. Just making the point ordered that. In order to hear the comments, we've heard them, if you are seeking to amend the minutes of a closed session, we have to go into closed session to take that motion.
The meetings too long. Obviously, they're closed. Valid point that is very important to that decision that we made, and it was just, I don't want to go into closed session.
All right. Your point is taken. All right, further questions, further comments? If not, if you would, go ahead and take the roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda as changed minus Item D, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioner Skolkowski.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
McLeod.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
No.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 16 yeas, one nay. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
All right, thank you. We will now move to Item Sub D of Section 9 and call upon Commissioner Bolter again.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I move 9D as a separate item, approval of the 63rd District Court Administrator Danielle Castillo as magistrate.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Skolkowski. Any discussion on the question? All right. No further discussion? I think the judge is here, yes. Will you please introduce the judge for us before we... Magistrate, yes, please. I said judge. I'm always used to making sure I refer to a magistrate as a judge in default.
We know she's pretty patient.
As she is. Good morning. I'm Jeff O'Hara, Chief Judge of the 63rd District Court, and here with me is Danielle Castillo, who we are asking that you approve to be our magistrate. Earlier today, my benchmate Sarah Smolinski was here, Judge Smolinski was here. She's back at our court. You all know that we have one of the busiest courts, and so she's back at the 63rd. We also have my chief probation officer, Nicole Brown, here. So with that, we are asking for your approval of Danielle Castillo to be our magistrate. Thank you for having, allowing us to have this time separately. It's a big deal. Danielle is very smart. She graduated cum laude from law school. She is well-respected by our entire staff. She is a person of high integrity and morals. She's a tireless worker, and she will serve our community well as well as our court, and I'm respectfully asking for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
I appreciate all of you and the consideration. I'm here to serve and look forward to this elite position. Thank you.
Great. Thank you and welcome. All right, if there's no other comments, let's, let's make this official. Please take the roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to approve Danielle as magistrate, 63rd District Court, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioner Skolkowski.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Teal.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 17 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Danielle Castillo is...
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome, and thank you for your patience, and you got a unanimous vote. That seems to be an accomplishment in itself here. All right. Let's move to our next item, which is Resolutions 10A, and I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I feel like it would be a unanimous vote, too, because this is about the babies and about the kids, so I'm very proud of the allocation for 2022.
Second. It is moved and supported by Commissioner Skaggs. Any comments on the question before the board? If not, before we call this, again, my gratitude to the members of this allocation committee. I have some sense about how much work that is to do, serving on the senior allocation, so appreciate all the hard work you put in that gets us to this point. And Madam Clerk, if you will take the roll, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 1, Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioner Skolkowski.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
McLeod.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 17 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 1 is adopted.
Excellent. Let's move to Item Sub B, and I will call on Commissioner or Vice Chair Breevy, excuse me.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution, Resolution 2 of today's date, 2022 current unmet needs funding from the Department of Health and Human Services.
Support.
It is moved and supported by Commissioners. If it is subject to debate, any comments or questions? Did I say Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Jones supported, sorry. If not, go ahead and take the roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Motion to adopt Resolution 2, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioner Skolkowski.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
McLeod.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
No.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 17 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Danielle Castillo is...
All right. Thank you, Judge.
I know you was going to make me talk. I appreciate all of you and the consideration. I'm here to serve and look forward to this elite position. Thank you.
Great. Thank you and welcome. All right, if there's no other comments, let's, let's make this official. Please take the roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to approve Danielle as magistrate, 63rd District Court, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioner Skolkowski.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
McLeod.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 17 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes.
Thank you. Let's move to the next item, Sub D, and I will again call on Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair Steck. It is my pleasure to move adoption of Resolution 4 of today's date to extend sub-award agreement for COVID emergency rental, for the COVID emergency rental assistance program, or CERA, that also comes to us from Kent County Community Action.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner McLeod? Yes. Any questions or comments from the board? Yes. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Just a question. I've been reading, especially nationally, where a lot of the money that's coming in the form of grants has been spent, misused, misappropriated. I'm not saying this is by any means. I just was wondering where we're at, what the need is like right now? Are we specifically towards actual need?
Susan Cervantes is here from KCCA. Good morning, Susan.
Good morning.
Thank you for sitting tightly there in this meeting, and if you can...
You're welcome.
If you can address and answer the question, please.
Yes, hi. Good morning, and thank you for having me today.
Thank you for sitting tightly there in this meeting, and if you can.
You're welcome.
If you can address and answer the question, please.
Yes, hi. Good morning, and thank you for having me today. I just wanted to answer the question that we have expended over $27 million in need. We still have, in the CERA One funds, we still have about $7 million left, and we will probably run out by, oh, probably the second week of February due to the number of applications that we have.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
The money is going where it's intended. I believe that it's a 15% administration, and that's based on all of the partners. So that would be KCCA, The United Way, the Salvation Army, The Source, and the Hispanic Center. We're all sharing in that 15%. The United Way is the fiduciary of the grant, and there is a checks and balances. We are going through a third party. It's CLA, which I can't remember. Clinton Larson something. They're a national consulting firm that they are reviewing every file that is completed. There's not been one file that hasn't been reviewed by a third-party reviewer. The United Way does.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Any other Commissioner with questions or comments on the issue? If not, Madam Clerk, you'll go ahead and take the roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution Four, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Mr. Bolkowski.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand. McCloud.
Yes.
Morgan. Hanstein. Scaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal. Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have sixteen A's, zero N's. The motion passes. Resolution Four.
All right, thank you. Let's move to the next item, sub E, and I will call on Vice Chair Breevy.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution Five of today's date to approve the Home Investment Partnership Program, American Rescue Plan, HUD Grant Agreement, and appropriation from Kent County Community Action.
Is there support from Commissioner Sparks? Any member wish to address the question? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. This is similar to E and F. I'm not going to ask for an explanation. I think I mentioned this in Finance, but it would be similar. And there is no waste. This is a once-in-a-lifetime, literally. Another knowledge here of what I call monopoly. Times when it's monopoly money, there's not as much. But at the end of the day.
Yes, Commissioner Womack.
Yes.
That issue is still being considered. Commissioner, I will point out, though, that these ARP funds are not an allocation of the county's specifically allocated ARP money. This comes to us in a different manner. Yes, Commissioner Wooden.
Yeah, certainly a lot of students can correct me if I'm wrong here, but since these are home funds that are allocated through the American Rescue Plan, I think they will go through the KCCA, which Mr. Womack is a governing board member of. So I think the answer to his question is, it's coming to your committee, man.
So we'll be expecting a very tight scrutinization.
Well, actually, the home funds are non-city GR, so we can spend them with out-county, what we call out-county, and with the consortium with the city of Wyoming. And they require consultation meetings, input from constituents, and we are starting that process once we have these approved. So there is going to be about a six-month evaluation process of how these funds should be spent, and we'll make sure that everyone is aware of how, of when those are and how they're being, the comments are being heard.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Not, Madam Clerk, will you take the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution Four, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Mr. Bolkowski.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand. McCloud. Morgan.
Yes.
Hanstein.
Yes.
Scaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal. Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have seventeen A's, zero N's. The motion passes. Resolution.
Thank you. Let's move to sub item F, and I will call on Commissioner Bolkowski.
Thank you, Chair. I will move Resolution Six of today's date from Fiscal Services to extend the COVID Emergency Rental Assistance Paying Process Agreement.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner McLeod. Any member wish to address the question? If, oh, almost got away with it. All right, Commissioner Womack.
If you allow me. If you allow me just to ask one quick question that I wanted to get in. Just kind of not about this. When you told me that this doesn't.
Well, you already asked the question, so we'll go ahead and give our administrator an opportunity to answer it.
It's ARP money, but not part of the 127 million direct allocation to Kent County, so it's not part of what you will vote to distribute as a board.
All right. Any other comments or questions from Commissioners? If not, Madam Clerk, will you go ahead and take the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution Six, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Mr. Bolkowski.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand. McCloud.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Hanstein.
Yes.
Scaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal. Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have seventeen A's, zero N's. The motion passes. Resolution Six is adopted.
Thank you. I will move to sub G and call on Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I move Resolution Seven of today's date, the appointments to various boards, commissions, and committees for the year 2022.
It is supported by Commissioner Morgan. Is there any question or comment from the members? Commissioner Bolkowski, I didn't see who was first, so I'll go with Commissioner Bolkowski.
Thank you. Well, in the spirit of bipartisanship, I just, my comment is related to the appointments to Carol Dard, for the National Airport Board. I have no issues with either of the people being nominated. My issue is that this commission was very adamant that when the first draft of the agreement between us and the airport, so as to spin it off as an authority, that the board would have three commissioners. And I know the language is up to three, which means we could eventually have zero, but the first draft said two. We said it's got to be three out of the seven commissioners. So that was a very, very strong bipartisan support to have three commissioners on that board. So just a historical note, we allowed Commissioner Corndyke to finish his term on the board when he was not reelected, which is great. There's no need for him to step aside. However, this is an opportunity. Again, as a whole package, thank you so much to the committee that represents tons of hard work, and I thank you for that, but that's just my comment about that nomination.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. I think Commissioner Ponstein, did you also have an issue?
A little bit different than my colleague. So I just want to say that, I don't know what this says about me, but for some reason, I've been on this committee for 13 of my 14 years in office. So I've seen a lot of processes that we've gone through, and the process is really quite remarkable, and I want to thank the staff that helps out the county commission. First of all, getting us the list and gathering together. I know we've had some turnover in that department. There were some challenges this year and questions, but talking to the staff that we have, they're already looking at ways of doing this better. I want to thank everyone that applied for it. It was a lengthy list that we went through, and with the challenging times of setting up interviews, I appreciate everyone that was willing to come forward and apply. Not everyone got positions. There were just more applicants than positions opened. So congratulations to the people that were appointed. I'm sure you're a lot of the sort of the county commission about, but all the residents of Kent County.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to give that off to the comments. Michael Collins, thank everyone that did apply, and also to Commissioner Bolkowski's point, if there is a third person, I'd like to please make sure that we consider Phil Hennessy for the Airport Board, who has been with us very patiently for a very long time and has served us very well, so I would like to voice that concern.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to thank all the applicants. I've talked to some that they got rejected, that basically. A few of them, I don't want them to be discouraged. The process is the best we can do. We have. These positions are extremely important. It does give.
All right, Commissioner Skaggs.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to echo Commissioner Bolkowski. You know, again, as I mentioned in my previous comments, from time to time, we've had some lack of seeing eye to eye with some of our appointed members of these institutions that we've spun off or that we're in partnership with, like the CIA, not the CIA. Don't want to spart any theories. The, with the CIA, and, you know, I think that we replaced the previous board appointment with a sitting member of the commission and Commissioner Bolter on the CIA. I think for precisely the reason that we wanted to have increased oversight and increased communication there. Now, this is a little different. We already have two boards of commissioners on there to do that. We know that we hear from Commissioner Morgan quite frequently on the Airport Board, and this is nothing at all against Commissioner Corndyke, who I think has served very well on that board. I do just want to state again, and we said this at Legislative and Human Rights Committee, so we don't need to necessarily go over it again. But as we spin off these institutions, they become less accountable to Democratic elected officials. That's with a small d. And if they're less accountable to us, then they're less accountable to the voters. And so it's my opinion, and I voiced and voted that in LHR, that we ought to go back to having our full complement of three commissioners, and if we don't rectify that here, I hope that we will in the near future.
Any other que, yes, Commissioner Morgan.
Yeah, I was kind of involved a little bit with that, the authority process of the Steering Committee, and, you know, as far as the commissioner involvement went, we, I really fought for up to two commissioners, because I think if we appoint the right person to this board, it doesn't matter how many. And going to an authority, really, I don't want to defend that, but we wouldn't have half the staff that we have out there if we didn't go to an authority. Now, I'm not sure, but maybe I want to check into this, but it says up to three elected officials. I don't, I'm not sure it says commissioner, but that's a point of discussion for another time. But I think when we put that Steering Committee together, a lot of the business community really felt strongly that we have representation on that board, and I think it's a great board to be on. It's just an outstanding board. It's, I think it's nimble. I don't think a lot of politics is getting away, and I think since it's become an authority, it really has become just one of these nationally recognized organizations. So not to get too deep into the weeds, I think that going to the authority was the absolute right thing to do, because we wouldn't have been able to even recruit our current executive officer. So as far as representative goes, if, I hope I'm doing a good job representing the county. I'm not bashful in letting folks know. Letting folks know where I stand, and please be assured that the county is foremost in my mind when I represent that board. So maybe when I leave next year, you'll have stronger relationships and, you know, stronger commissioners. But as far as it goes right now, I think that organization is just top-notch, and you just wait to see what's on the drawing board for that organization, so.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I just wanted to add, after a conversation with Chair Steck and reviewing everything I have been involved in over quite some time, that I will not be on the CIA Liaison Committee, that that will be Carol Hennessy. So if you haven't noted that change, I just thought I'd let you know that, knowing that my name doesn't show up too few times on committee assignments, and I know she'll do a fabulous job on that.
All right, any other comments or questions? If not, I have just a couple of comments of my own, since the rules give the chair the ability to comment on issues. That's a nice addition in our rules. First of all, thank you to the Legislative and Human Resources Committee for all of the hard work that goes into this process of evaluating, reviewing, interviewing, deliberating, and then making the recommendations. I know that that is a significant part of the work of that committee, and I think they all did a great job this year. Secondly, we did deliberate these recommendations at the LHR and had a good, robust discussion, including about the airport recommendation. At that time, I did indicate that I supported the recommendation as is set forth now. I'm told, I may have, in the course of those comments, suggested that Commissioner Hennessy was not qualified for that, and for that, I would sincerely apologize if that's what I had said. Obviously, she's eminently qualified to do that. Nevertheless, it was my judgment that we go with this recommendation, but if that's what I said, Commissioner, I certainly apologize. I had never intended that. So with that, we'll go ahead and call the question and have the roll call take.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution Seven, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Chair, Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Mr. Bolkowski.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand. McCloud.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Hanstein.
Yes.
Scaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal. Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Vice, Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have seventeen A's, zero N's. The motion passes. Resolution Seven is adopted.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to the next item on our agenda, which is item 11, Appointments, sub A, which is the appointments to the standing committees that are attached to your amended agenda. And this is a reminder pursuant to Rule 1.3 E and F. It is my responsibility to submit a determination of the assignments to the standing committees, which I have done. It is subject to approval of the board, so I would invite a motion to approve that recommendation. Moved, moved and supported. Moved by Commissioner Bolter, supported by Vice Chair Breevy. Discussions? It is a voice vote, I believe, so all those that support the motion say yep, yes?
Yes.
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 Those that do not say no. Those that do not, say no, it is approved. Then Sub B, Item 11, which is the annual chair appointments of various committees, again, under our standing rules, this is an obligation that I have, is the chair, subject to the approval of the board. It is also attached to your agenda, or amended agenda, which includes my appointments, recommendation for appointments to the various boards and positions where there are openings. So, I'll take a motion to approve that as well. Moved by Commissioner Bolter, supported by, all right, Commissioner Wooden. Discussion? If not, I'll call the question, this too is a voice vote, all those that support the motion say yes?
Yes.
Those that oppose say no? It is approved. All right. With that, we move to the next item, which is our second opportunity for public comment, if there's anyone from the public that wishes to address the board, you may do so at this point, identify yourself, and you have up to three minutes, it is on matters that pertain to our jurisdiction. Yes, good aft-- almost good afternoon. Good morning, again.
Thank you, my name Nick Pril, again if you need it. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize that today, a lot of us parents are celebrating the expiration of Adam London's health order that expired yesterday, so we're grateful for that, we're grateful he didn't extend it, but to the, the Board of Commissioners, I just want to say, we are still, as parents, very concerned about the collusion that was going on between Adam and KISD, we're concerned about some of the data that was being used, and my plea to you is, or has been, is that you guys do not let this just expire with his mandate, that you guys take an active role to figure out and make sure that everything he did was with, you know, the utmost ethics and professionalism in his position, because we're not going to forget about it, and I hope you guys don't too, thank you.
Thank you Dick, anyone else? Good morning and welcome back.
Morning, thank you.
Another three minutes.
Happy to be here, should be unabridged. Fine display of partisan politics this morning, also, I would second Commissioner Breevy's statements on a moral compass and the lack thereof, I would say that all of you stand indicted on those charges, the fact that it was revealed today in an open meeting that there was investigated and determined by counsel a conflict of interest, and that person is still seated on the board, that's egregious, that's an abdication of your power and responsibility, this is a person that should no longer serve, this is a person that should step aside, should have stepped aside on his own, and let someone else who was more suitable for the position fill that role. The other thing I would say is that you also abdicated in the Adam London situation. Despite the fact that the Health Department requirements for a mask mandate have now lapsed, the fact of the matter is, is that Adam London acted outside of his jurisdiction. We sat at the DeVos Center and threw hours of testimony, hours of public comment, and determined at the end that Adam London based his initial mask mandate on nothing more than an inherent and imminent threat of danger. I would tell you that we're already going down that road again, Forest Hills Public School has already issued a new mask mandate, there is no evidence to support that masks work, there is evidence that is accumulating that masks harm. There have been studies now done that show that the IQ for our kids that are in their developmental prime have dropped 20 points of IQ already. I would tell you to stop abdicating and take a stand, this is your chance to shine. I would also say that party politics are a thing of the past, the fact that the Democratic Caucus couldn't get out of their own way and make an informed decision on who should lead their party, egregious, because I'm sure that most of you sitting on the board were aware of the DPW issue before I found out this morning. You guys have to act with moral authority and lead, lead by example, there's a reason that our founding fathers swore after signing the Constitution on their lives, their fortunes, and their sacred honor, honor, do the right thing.
Thank you, anyone else? All right, if not, we will move to the next item on our agenda, which is the Administrator's report.
I'll try to keep it under a half hour this morning.
I have control of the microphone.
All right, just a couple of quick items for you, first, Happy New Year to everyone, this is going to be a big year in Kent County, a big year where we improve services and also quality of life, with a number of the initiatives that we have. We'll point, point your attention one more time to the local unit meetings, they'll be happening this month, and in the four quadrants of the county, as we look to improve our relationships with our city, village, and township partners. Also, this will be a big month with the ARPA money that came up earlier, at the, on the next regular board agenda this month, we will have a proposed appropriation of the $10 million that the board allocated last year for more emergent type needs, then we'll also have a recommendation to hire a consultant to help us work through the process of bring, of bringing the board and working with the board to develop an appropriation schedule for the remainder of the funds over the next few years. Also, I imagine, if she hasn't already, that Kaylee will be trying to get 19 commissioners together for strategic planning. I just wanted to let you know, as your new administrator, it's really important to me that we get all hands on deck, and so, we'll probably, so, if you could do that, that would be a huge help to me, a huge help to staff. The, the big plan is, we have the five-year plan, and yet we didn't really have the wheels under to make sure that there was accountability to get it done, so some areas looked at and said, oh yeah, I think we'll do this, I think we'll do this. What we'll do each year is a priority setting, a strategic planning priority setting that will kind of make that plan real and provide accountability back to you, that it's actually getting worked on and getting done, and then the administration will make sure that we report out quarterly on progress made towards the plan, how are we moving the dial? But, the, the engine to make that work is an annual strategic planning with all of you, and so, during that planning, we'll be doing a number of things, including ranking priorities, and that's why it's critical that you're all there. I had trouble getting 11 together in Ottawa, I think we did it all but two years, but it is a very important part of the process, there'll also be just a small amount of homework, it won't take you very long, but I would ask that all 19 of you complete that as well, because that will help the process as well. So, I'll keep it short, that's it for today.
Great, thank you for your report, and thank you for being short. All right, let's move to the next item, which is reports, if any member has a report to the commission, yes, Commissioner Jones.
Thank you Chair Steck, I just have a few, I'll keep them short, Kent County Parks Foundation did meet, and we saw the results of a Canary Consulting report that you'll be hearing more about going forward, one of the key aspects that came out of that is a lot of conversations on the funding for our parks, the other piece is the Experience Grand Rapids met, and it is nice to know that more heads and beds have been coming back since we've had our vaccination and more activity, so all of that is very positive, we haven't recovered completely, but it certainly is moving in that direction, and as if you haven't had quite enough of the Board of Commissioners, we will have a Finance and Physical Resources Committee meeting tomorrow, so please take a look at your standing committee assignment, and please plan to attend if you're on the committee. We have that at 8:30 Al, is what I have on my...
No, we, we don't have one tomorrow, it's in two weeks.
All right, so we don't have one tomorrow?
Correct.
All right, because it was on the schedule for tomorrow.
You can still come in.
Yeah, I can still come in, all right, so nevermind, don't come in tomorrow, come in in two, in two weeks, but like I said, I just noted it was on the schedule, we'll just make a note that we're not meeting tomorrow then, and with that, I will close off my report.
All right, thank you Commissioner, Commissioner, or Vice Chair Breevy.
Thank you Chair, hey, it's all right, we're all learning, so I serve on the Board of Public Works, and just wanted to let everybody know, we do have a meeting on Thursday, this week, Thursday, at 8:30 in the morning, our meeting location has changed, it's going to be in our new headquarters, which is at 1045 Wealthy Street Southwest, right by the Recycling Center, hope to see you all there who are on the board, but then also, following our board meeting around 9:30, we'll be doing a ribbon cutting, and you all are invited to attend, thank you.
All right, anyone else? If not, I have just a couple of items under reports, first of all, the subcommittees that have previously been appointed under our, under our standing rules, basically those appointments lapse at the end of the year, and so I'm going to reappoint three subcommittees, first of all, there's a Judicial Expansion Committee that was previously appointed, I'll reappoint Commissioner Teal as the chair, Commissioner LeGrand, and Commissioner Breevy to serve on that going forward, also a Veterans Milage Committee, I'll reappoint Commissioner Burrow to serve as the chair of that, and Commissioner Sparks and Ponstein to continue to serve on that subcommittee, and then finally, there's a Broadband Committee, I'll reappoint Commissioner Green to serve as the chair of that committee, and Commissioner Bolter to serve, and there will be one more member that will resolve that and bring that back to you at the next meeting. And I have one other item of, I'm not sure it's a report, it's a reflection on something I overlooked, and that is that you have before you a set of minutes from the closed session, those need to be recovered, and so, if you'll make sure that those are returned to the clerk, or, or here to Linda, so that we can recover those as well. All right, we're getting there, miscellaneous, yes, Commissioner Antor, miscellaneous.
Thank you Chair, personally saying I wanted to just say thank you for allowing the process to work this morning, I realize it got a little lumpy trying to get public comment injected into this, but I appreciate the fact that you found the path, and I thank you for that, I didn't mean to make your first day on the job be this long, but that's the way it goes sometimes.
You owe me.
I do. Al, welcome to Kent County, your first full year in 2022, be careful what you wish, vote as well, it doesn't always, it's not always like this, but I appreciate everything you've done so far, and the one thing I wanted to bring up real quickly, I, I did realize prior that the best time to ask for this kind of weird motion to get public comment was at the very beginning, and I thought about that, but I did not want to step over our invocation and our pledge, that's not the time, I, I think we need to ask for guidance before we ask for a motion, so it felt real tacky to me, so that's why I did it, but I appreciate the path, thank you.
All right, any other miscellaneous? Yes, Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you Chair Steck, so I too, like Al, want to wish everyone a new year, I can't imagine in my life that 2022 will be any worse than this past year, but can you hold my glass of wine for me? There was something said earlier that of all the things that we did together unanimously, just wanted to correct something, the vote on the budget was not unanimous, I know that in fact, because I was one of the no votes on that, and then I just want to give a shout out to a small businessman that's in the room, at the end of the month, he's holding his Hunting Time Expo that has survived the COVID crisis over the past couple of years, and brings a lot of people into our great county, fills hotel rooms, and it's just a great event, so, but I just wish Tom Antor and his wife, who put on the show, best of luck with the Hunting Time Expo this year.
All right, Commissioner Bolter.
Thank you Chair Steck, I really hate to belabor this meeting any longer, but there was a lot of discussion today about the rules, and some disparaging comments made about the rules, and I just want to remind everyone that we all unanimously voted for the rules, and it is not an easy task to sit there and tediously go through each line and each word, and it's a subcommittee that no one wants to do, and, and I'm very grateful for the people that served on that committee, because if we don't have rules, we don't have order, and no one's trying to game the rules, no one's trying to keep people from public testimony or, or any of that, but you have to have rules as a governing board of 19 people who are bipartisan, and so, it kind of upset me today that that was mentioned, and I just want to make those comments, because it's important, so, with that, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Womack.
Yes. I figured out that the rule was, and then going to just say another thing, I would just go back. This country also believes that these standing rules, our rules, policies and laws are set by the people, and I think that our commission has done a great job with rules, but that's another reason I ran for Minority Chair, because when you look over the hundred years of the Executive Committee and not having minorities in those rooms, who knows, it kind of goes to some of the civil unrest in America, that sometime there's rules that have to be changed because of diversity, I think we got a very good commission here, I, I think, I think they'll continue, I don't blame this board as a whole, I don't blame any of them, I was wrong sometime, I act somebody that might be running against me, because it's not their fault that the rules I switched have been, if I was in their position, I probably would step into those shoes too. I do call to my caucus, where I've heard a commissioner say that seniority doesn't mean anything, I believe, all right, he hasn't ran, he does a lot of work for our caucus, but he does respect seniority, and, but in a black ecosystem in our community, people like the commissioner told me, your seniority, seniority doesn't mean anything, so when you get us in our community, and if I'm the new freshman in college, if you tell it me seniority doesn't mean anything, I have no respect for the seniority, if you tell us seniority doesn't mean anything, who do we respect? That came before, in our ecosystem, it's based on yes sir, no sir, it's based on selling out, it's like, when I hold, what I can't do is because, no matter what I do for the people I was voted for, is basically what can you do for us, so here I am, I don't have no money, you know, I don't have a political influence, but I represent a school that gave 40 shots of gunfire, kids with reading disabilities, I know y'all wonder why I get emotional, they shot my cousin in the head, and it's because the guys she hung around, no matter how much she went to school and tried, the guys she hang around don't believe in the American dream, I don't need to be here at a radio station, I have to make them believe and know, and if you try, everybody who says I'm not good enough, my community is people that support me just because I'm trying, they giving up, I'm an ex-rapper, yeah, we got pride, ain't gonna be no no sir, yes sir, master, we ain't kissing a butt, we not gonna do that, I'm gonna come here, I'm gonna respect everybody, I'm gonna do the, the job to the best of my ability, I'm gonna respect everybody, Democrat, Republicans, I got such a good, I was at Harold Voorhees, shock that I came to see him, and why don't we get his reward, but in my community, he's a senior, I learned from him here, I had to be there, and I'm gonna keep it short, I just don't want to throw away all the good things that do come out my neighborhood, despite the disparities, despite the higher incarceration rates, despite the guns, but I come down here and I got political guns at my head, and a lot of my neighbors don't understand, I have to walk through a neighborhood where we got to worry about... understand, I have to walk through a neighborhood where we gotta worry about guns. But my child, the political guns, I don't know which is more dangerous. I just want to, uh... I do respect everybody on this board, and I hope that I've proven to you in these five to six years that I've done everything I can to learn the rules, to learn how we can leverage these taxes and get the best services, and do the job that a commissioner can do. All I can give you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Breevy?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to thank you for the support for Vice Chair, and I look forward to serving as Chair of the Legislative Committee and working through our legislative priorities and some of those priorities that maybe didn't get the action we wanted, to moving those across the finish line this year. So I look forward to hearing from you as to what your priorities are and working through that together. So thanks for the support.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you, Chair. I always do, I appreciate the heartfelt comments of Commissioner Womack. Rules, I'm not sure the- And I beg your pardon, Chair, I have to run to a six-year-old that depends on me for-
You're gonna miss my parting comments about you, but okay.
I'll watch them on YouTube.
Any other comments? All right, if not, just a couple of thoughts I'll finish with. Certainly, this meeting's any indicator, we're in for a challenging year. But I will say that I have spent some time over the course of the last month talking to a fair number of you, both the Republicans and Democrats, about what you see coming up in this year and what we would like to accomplish in this coming year, and what are the goals that will define whether or not we see this year as a successful year or not. And, and there have been a lot of interesting, dynamic challenges that you have mentioned, and each of these, I think, are within our reach, they're within our capacity to accomplish, but they are daunting. I will say, I didn't hear from any of you suggesting that your goal this year is to bog down in partisan ricker or to be fighting about procedural rules back and forth. It didn't come up even once. So I'm going to take that at heart and say, what's going to define this Board going forward is the extent to which we can stay focused on those goals that we've said are important to us. And to do that, we're going to have to set aside some of our feelings, we're going to have to set aside some of our individual personal concerns, and we're going to have to stay focused on what it is that does the best job for this community. And I'm looking forward to do that. I think my principal role as a Chair is to make sure we all stay on that task. And sometimes I'll call you on the carpet on that, and sometimes you'll call me and encourage me to go in that direction. But that's what I put before us this year, and I think we can do some significant things. We all know that we want to deal with our waste stream, broadband, environmental concerns, the behavioral health crisis system, and many more that you guys have mentioned. And I think that we're going to get those done this year or make significant progress in that. But we have to stay tuned. We have to stay focused, and we have to stay on the job to do that. So I'm looking forward to that and working with all of you in accomplishing those objectives. Second thing I wanted to say, I was not here when Chair Bolter was at her last meeting. I had to go and talk to a lawyer. Boy, that was not as much fun. But at any rate, I didn't get a chance to, to express my gratitude to her for her years of service over the course of the last three years. They have been remarkable. You've demonstrated an incredible capacity to continue to work with all of us, regardless of our idiosyncrasies and weaknesses and strengths. But I think that you have moved us through perhaps one of the most challenging phases in years and eras that we've seen in my lifetime, and it's almost as long as Commissioner Morgan's. So I appreciate that, and thank you for that. And other than setting a very high bar for me, thank you for your work. And the last thing is, I would be remiss if I didn't thank my wife who is sitting here today. They're not all like this, honey. But, but now you understand. When I say we got tied up in the meeting, you'll truly understand that that can happen. Thank you, though, for your sacrifice. I know that it takes sacrifice for me to be able to do what I'm doing here and have in the past and going forward, so I'm so appreciative of your support. Thank you. And with that, I thought I could extend it to noon, but I can't quite, so I will go ahead and call on Commissioner Bolter.
If you need, if you need to know, I can help.
Yeah, no, we're, we're fine, we're fine, we're gonna get there. Commissioner Bolter?
We know you can. There's no, no doubt. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to adjourn, subject to the call of the Chair for Thursday, January twenty-seventh, at eight thirty a.m. for our next official meeting.
Support?
Support.
All in the favor, say yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned.